Member Hicks?
Here.
Member, or Councilor Pierce?
Here, I'm alone in this room.
Thank you. Member Regan?
Here, and I'm alone too.
You too.
So am I.
As am I. Okay, so we have a quorum, we will open the...
You are cutting out, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
Did you ask?
I, yeah, I was wondering, did you call?
Did I call? He almost lost the video. Yeah, we're having some internet problems here. Okay, there, it looks like you're back. I did call, Member Rosenberg, if that's what you were asking.
Good, alright, yep. Who is, am I breaking up? Because I'm got nice strong, I got nice strong internet, so.
You, you're not now, you, you were.
You were.
Okay. Try to, uh...
Downloading of all the new OS.
Yeah, no, not me, believe me. Okay, so I, I had you call the roll first, so I could bring up this, the COVID checklist, that I have to read to record, so I'll read this into the record as Chair of the Concord New Hampshire Planning Board due to the COVID-19 crisis, and in accordance with Governor Shunino's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency... The order, this is to, we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through, through clicking on the following website address. It is HTTPS, full colon, forward slash, forward slash, zoom.us/j/754076629, or by dialing the following phone number, 929-208-6099, and entering the password 754076629. For those coming in who want to provide public testimony, please dial star nine to alert the host that you'd like to speak. The host will unmute you during the public portion of hearing of the, during the public hearing portion of the meeting. B, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting using the Zoom platform, and instructions are provided on the City of Concord's website at C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has problems, please call 603... Hmm, I don't think this is the right number, we'll confirm it when I get done, 603-568-8515, or send an email to planning@concordnewhampshire.gov. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, our quorum will, with, we will, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all the votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So with that, we'll move forward and open the meeting. We'll move right into approval of the minutes from the prior, from the prior meeting. The August 19th, 2020 Planning Board meeting, when someone would like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted, or make a motion to change them in any way.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made by Matt Hicks and seconded by Council Pierce. All those in favor by roll call?
Chair Woodfin?
Yes.
Member Fox?
Yes.
Member Rosenberg?
I wasn't there, so I'm staying.
Okay. Member Hicks?
Yes.
Member Regan?
Yes.
Council Pierce?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a little agenda overview. We have a couple of folks from the city with us tonight. They're going to speak after we do our consent agenda items, determination of completeness and ADR by consent. So we'll move right into Agenda Five. Everything on the agenda, nothing's been pulled right out of there, late, no late polls, okay? So everything that's on the agenda will be heard tonight. We'll move into the determination of completeness phase. We have, for those attendees at the meeting, we address these sign applications that have been heard and other things by consent. Well, sorry, we'll address that in just a second. So determination of completeness by consent. We have two items on the consent agenda for determination of completeness. Both of those will be heard at next month's meeting, is that right Heather?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have Item 5A, which is novice engineering on behalf of Brixmore Capital, and Item 5B, which is Whitmore Holdings, request a major site point approval for an expansion on 45 Chanel Drive. So there's a determination of completeness by consent, would anybody like to pull those items off the consent agenda and address them, or it's just a straight determination of completeness, so we can, we can look at those, and if someone would like to make a motion to find the applications complete and open the public hearing, or set the public hearing for next month, we'll take that, we'll take that motion.
I'll slow.
Second.
Heather?
Can we clarify a motion to include that neither are considered developments of regional impact, and that the date of the public hearing is October 21st?
Yes, sorry. So again, if that's, that's okay with whoever made the motion in the second, that these are not developments of regional impact, and that it's October 21st for these meetings. I've got my little sheet of paper now, so I'll be good, Heather.
Okay.
That's okay for your motion and second?
Yes, that's fine for the motion maker.
Okay, and the second was?
It's fine for the second, too.
Okay, so all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Yes?
Chair Fox, or Member Fox?
Yes.
Member Rosenberg?
Yes.
Member Hicks?
Yes.
Member Regan?
Yes.
Council Pierce? You're on mute.
Yes.
So we'll change it up and start I next time, and no, and yes and no. Alright, so let's do a design review applications by consent. So again, in the audience, if you're listening, Items 6A, 6B, 6C, and 6D have been presented to, to the board. We've put them on the consent agenda item, reviewed them. If any member of the board wishes to pull any of those items off, please make yourself known, we'll pull those out. And if any member of the audience wishes to pull those out from an approval process and put them into discussion, please let the host know now. If not, we will take a motion from the board. Heather, nobody's raising their hands?
No hands raised.
Okay, so we'll take a motion from the board on Item 6, which is a design review applications by consent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those applications as submitted with ADR, with ADR recommendations?
I move approval.
Second.
That was John Regan making that move of approval, and David Fox seconding it. I think Earl was in, everybody beat you out, Earl, so we'll do a roll call vote for that. All those, all those in favor of approving that under, under Item 6 by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Yes.
Member Regan?
Aye and yes.
Council Pierce?
I say yes.
Alright, that's a good one. We'll keep everybody honest with the ayes and yes. So we got a couple of special guests that are going to come in tonight, talk to us about signs. We've talked at length in the board regarding sign applications and some of the frustrations that some of the board members, myself included, have had with signs being approved, excuse me, signs being put up in the, on the buildings and in the public space prior to approval. So Carlos Baia, the Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager, and David Hall from Code Approval are here. If you guys could introduce yourselves, welcome to the table, gentlemen.
Good evening, Chairman Woodfin and members of the board. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. So we understand that the board has some concerns regarding the sign ordinance enforcement process. Heather brought those concerns to our attention some time ago, so we met internally, and David Hall, the code administrator, has taken the lead on this issue, and he's got some, he looked at the history of the enforcement regarding signs, and he also has some recommendations to bring to your attention and see what your, your feedback would be on those, to hopefully rectify the concerns that you have. So I'm really going to turn it over to David, and I'm just here more or less to provide some support.
Great, welcome David. Oh, you're on mute still.
Yeah, I know how to do Zoom. Thank you very much. Thank you for the invite and the opportunity to present and discuss this with you folks. I've been the code administrator for a little over a year, and since that time, we've worked on several issues with Carlos and the staff members of the code to enhance and improve some processes. I was not aware of the magnitude of the frustration that the ADR and the planning board had with signs, but obviously Heather has brought it to our attention. And when Carlos sat down and we reviewed it, we said, "Let's come up with some plans or ideas and present them back to you." Just for a little history, obviously your sign history goes back several years. I've only been here for a year. In the year I've been here, we processed a little over 220 sign permits. We have have implemented the fee or the penalty and doubled the fee on a couple of cases that I am aware of. Unfortunately, our current tracker system doesn't show that as a field, so it's very difficult to go back three, five years to see when we have actually implemented those fees as far as a penalty. But I can assure you that as a code administrator, working with the staff, mainly with Craig Walker, as things have come up to us and been identified, we have dealt and identified them, worked with the client, tried to educate them, and we will impose that fee as it is currently written. So to that point, currently, right now, the ordinance for fees allows us, it's ordinance 26-1-6.1, the fee for any signed permit shall be doubled for any sign which is hereafter erected, installed, prior to issuance of a permit. So when we looked at that historically, as far as the cost of a permit, I'm not sure that that was really a deterrent to some of the business owners and/or sign companies. So we polled probably about a half dozen communities around us, tried to see what they were doing, and there is no standard at all. Manchester just uses the regular ordinance, and they'll go after them through the courts. Summersworth doubles theirs, similar to what we're doing. So in talking to Craig, and Rose, and Carlos, and along with Heather, I think one of the things that we'd like to present as options for updating our ordinance for any business that puts up signs without a permit is with proper legal review, we would propose that the applicant would have to pay the sign fee plus $100 on top of that, or double the total cost, whichever is greater. This, I think, would allow us to allow the mom and pops to have a sting for putting up a sign. It's going to cost them an extra $100. And if you have your larger companies that have, you know, a $400 or $500 sign permit, it's going to double it for them, and that's going to be a much bigger sting, instead of just saying, "I'll pay $100." On top of that, I think what's really critical, and I've worked very hard with Carlos on this, is that we try to educate and inform both the business owners, residents, and the sign companies. So we propose, even if we don't change the ordinance, in a matter of educating them, to at least say to send out a flyer or a notice, update the website as to what the current policy is. It's a little difficult to find on our website right now, and we're going to try to change the links and get that, so it's more visible and easily attained as far as the permits and the signs, and what the penalty could be for putting it up without a proper permit. So I guess, and then the other thing I think that was missing or lacking was our, our communication with both the ADR and this board here. If we know of cases, I'm not sure of the best method to do that, that we could just either identify it with Heather, and she can let you know that, yep, we're aware that there's a company that did X, Y, Z, and we've sent them a notice, and they have proper amount of time to either take the signs down, or come get the proper permit, which would then be, have the fee assessed to them. Does that make sense? Is that, I mean, that's, that's my opening statement, so I'll field any questions you have.
Sure, so it does make sense, and it's, again, I think the, our frustration is, is some of the business owners, even the, the people that I've talked to on Main, not Main Street, but either in the downtown quarter, I spoke to a wealth services company maybe a year and a half or two years ago, that had put up a whole series of signs, front of the building, back of the building, an awning sign. And, and I spoke to one of the principals that was there, and he said, "You could find me $100 a day, and I'm still going to put the sign up, because it's basically, I'm, I'm, I'm losing business if people don't know where I am." So some of that kind of stung a little bit in the sense that, you know, there's not a, you know, we don't want to charge people $1,000 to, to, you know, for, for making a mistake if they're a small business. And then I started looking at it from the, I started looking at it from the sign companies. I started looking at, you know, Glenn Shadlock, I don't want to pick on him, but he, he, he does it right. So Glenn is, is one of those people that he usually makes sure that all the eyes are dotted, the tees are crossed. He knows he's the one who complains to us that says, "Hey, they put the sign up on the Rowley Building," or "They did this, or they did that," and, and I encourage that, I want to hear that, that feedback. So my, my question, and I, I don't have a good answer, I, I think this is a good step in the right direction, but my question is, are we, are we giving them a sign-off on the zoning piece of it, and people in their minds say, "Okay, I got everything I need, I know I'm in compliance with zoning, I'm going to go ahead and get it, get it started." So I talked to a, a business owner that said, "I got my zoning, I don't need to worry about planning, that's just colors and, 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 you know, look and feel. I know I can have 22 square feet on the front of the building." So I'm wondering if, there, I don't want to hold anything up, and I don't want to make people go through the hoop twice, but if they come to zoning, they get a, they get an okay from zoning, do they really get an okay? Do they get a slip of paper that says, "Yes, you've passed your zoning, and you're, you're, you're approved, you've got approval from the zoning perspective"? Can that at all be held up until planning, or until ADR and planning have a crack at it? So zoning meets approves it, it comes to ADR, they approve it, it comes to planning, we approve it. It doesn't have to go back to zoning, but the, the fact that they're leaving the zoning meeting with an approval in their hand is what I've heard several times, people say, "That's all I needed, was the zoning piece." I don't know if anybody else has heard that.
If I can address that while people are considering that, if, when you say zoning, I assume you mean Craig Walker, the zoning administrator who reviews all the sign applications?
The zoning meeting, so they go to a zoning meeting for the ZVA.
Okay, so I wasn't sure which, which way you were looking at the other one. When they leave ZVAs, I understand that they are not given a piece of paper, other than they, they've been, receiving an approval through the ZVA. We can do a better job, if needed, of making sure they understand that it's not an approval to put the sign out.
Yep.
And I can work with Mr. Walker tomorrow and make sure that any type of case that comes out is ZVA. The same thing is done verbally when they come to the desk and ask about a sign. We will give them clearance from a zoning perspective, from a size perspective, but they still might have to go through ADR and say, "You need to go through ADR for approval."
Yep.
So we can certainly do a better job of trying to make sure they understand that our okaying the step is not an approval.
Okay. Okay, Teresa, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'll unmute first. Well, I have a question. What's the enforcement process?
So the enforcement process is, if we get notified of a business that has a sign up there, we will either send Craig or a zoning inspector out there to verify that there is an infraction. Once that's verified, we will send a letter to the business, and typically we'll give them two weeks to resolve the situation, get the sign, remove the signs, is ideally what we're looking for them to do, and apply for the proper permits. Sometimes we find, you know, they'll put up flags or A-frames which aren't attached to the building, so it's easy for them just to collect those back in until they apply for the proper permits. But there is a due process we have to go through, it's not a 24-hour notice and they have to take it down. We have to give them enough time to respond properly.
So you give them a couple of weeks to respond, and then there, if they, and then is, that goes through planning, zoning and planning, or planning, ADR and planning at that point?
Well, so during that two-week period, if they did not have a proper permit, they would have to apply for that permit.
Right.
And then depending on the circumstances, yes, then it can go through zoning, ADR, and planning before it's issued approval.
But the sign stays up, and they're still just fined at this point. What, what's the fine now, $25, $50?
Uh, right now, there is no fine. That's an interesting perspective you brought up. Because you have no way of penalizing an organization for putting up a sign until they actually apply for the permit. Then we can double it.
Then you can, then you currently can double the fine?
That's what I...
So the, so the fines what?
Is double the, the cost of the permit.
Currently, that's it?
Right.
Okay, and what's the cost of the permit?
It, it can vary from anywhere from as inexpensive as $30 to thousands.
Well, so, for example, and I apologize, Mr. Hall, you weren't here, but for example, when the Raleigh agency put this humongous sign up on their building, it hadn't gone through planning. And so I guess, at that point, we were told there was a $25 fine or something of that sort. So they get to leave the sign up, and Carlos, you may have to be the one to answer those ones, if you were here. I don't want to put poor Mr. Hall on the spot, since he wasn't here. But, so, in a situation like that, that sign stayed up, and I don't know that there was any real repercussion for them. I mean, somebody help me here, you, your memories are better than mine. Matt, you might remember this, but, or Carlos, you. I'm just trying to figure out what we do now compared to what the proposal is.
So, if I could?
Yep.
I, I, I'm not, I remember the time the Raleigh agency put the sign up, but I wasn't involved with whatever the enforcement action was, so I can't speak to that directly. I do think that there, there may be, legally, we probably have the ability to go after them as some sort of a land use violation, because the sign ordinance is embedded within the zoning ordinance. And if that's the case, the statute allows us to charge a per-day fine for every violation. I will tell you, historically, that is difficult to carry out, because if we end up in court, in, in, many times the judge will throw out a lot of the fines, and we end up with, with nothing. But we do get them to comply, but it may take a long time. That has not necessarily been the case with signs. Usually that's the case with a very significant land use violation. But that's probably something we can look in, look at as well, when we're doing this process of recommending these changes. I think David's recommendation this evening makes a lot of sense for most of the cases that are people that may have just done things inadvertently, and not, I don't want to say nefariously, but, you know, to the example that Chairman Woodfin used, I mean, that seems like somebody who clearly knew the, the rules, and was just, you know, they decided they wanted to do something else. And we can also look at how we can enforce this from a land use perspective for those instances that the chairman noted, where somebody's, they just put this up because they're going to put it up, and they want to get the attention to their new business, or whatever it might be. So we can, we can do, do a parallel track and come back to you with, with that other alternative as well, so that's clear to the board.
But it's still, it's still complaint-based, right Carlos? It's got to be, somebody's got to complain about it for action.
Well, it's complaint-based, only to the extent if we don't see it, we won't know it's happening. So if somebody brings it to our attention, yes. If we see it, if anybody in code administration that's, that is involved in the sign process, like David, or, or Craig, or Bob Native, who are the code inspectors, if they drive out and they see a sign that's come up that's brand new, that they know hasn't received a permit, that, they should take action on that. That's not, they don't have to wait around for a complaint, they should be doing that proactively.
I know, I know Craig must just cringe every time he sees an email come from me, because I've, I keep, I keep sending them along when I find them, and, and it's all I can do. But Teresa, I cut you off there, anything else?
No, I was just trying to figure out how it was enforced, and whether it sounds like to me it's people like, like us who are driving around going, "Oh, I don't think I approved that." That's about, that's about it. I mean, I'm kind of surprised the city didn't recognize the Genesis situation or Rally, because those are pretty obvious, and I, I mean, Matt and I both saw Genesis and went, "Whoa, I don't remember approving that." But, so I think part of the issue too is how the enforcement, and it sounds like it's just by sight.
Right.
I mean, I will, I will tell you, Mr. Hall, I've complained about this a while. I ran the telephone company, and let me tell you, even though I'm a lovely, honest woman who tries to follow the rules, there is absolutely no question, when the PUC at times put requirements on us that were just so onerous to have to comply with, it was, it was frankly more cost-effective to pay the fine. And the fines were huge. And I think in some cases there, and then some cases, businesses go, "Okay, what, which is saying, Chairman Wood, Woodfin's saying, you know, I want to get my sign up, I want to get my business going, it's easier just to say heck with it, pay the fine," and particularly if the fines are really small. My concern, the whole Tom and I have probably been a little bit outspoken about this, is why have regulations if they're not being enforced? Or if we're, you know, even why have fines if we're not penalizing people? It just seems to me, there's no reason that to have these codes and regulations if we're not going to, if, when, if some people adhere and others don't, we kind of turn, turn the other way. I'm the bad guy. If you haven't noticed, they called on me, because they think I'm the bad guy.
Everybody, everybody's hand went up when you said you were a nice, honest person, and we got a lot of point, counterpoint, but I got David Fox, but I'm going to hold you, David, for a second. And David Hall, just to respond, David Hall, to any of those. And, and one other point regarding the enforcement piece that, that I spoke this, this afternoon about with somebody, was the Genesis sign that came before us. It was already up, it was not approved. It came before us, we didn't approve it, we, we sent them back and said, "Go back and change it to the right way." We, they came back to us with a new set of plans and said, "Here's the new, here's the new set of plans." What's the code process for making sure that either, you know, now, or within the next X amount of weeks or months, that that sign get replaced? I mean, they just got it approved last month, but, you know, I don't know what the process is for someone to, to check off a box and say, you know, it was, it was pushed back, and, and now it's approved, and this new design is the approved sign. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I'll have to check with Craig Walker as far as that process that he utilizes to verify the signs have been updated or installed properly, especially in the Genesis case. I know when they set up signs to go back to, we are out there looking. The inspectors know when they're driving around. If they see something that's new or curious to them, they will come back and ask, "Was a permit for this?" or "This building's put up a new sign," or "Doing some construction." So we do meet, and I'm, I should say, Dario meets with his team every morning, and we review things of that nature, what's happening in the city that we see. What's happening in the city that we see, uh, that had they been permitted properly. Um, so signs do come in there. Um, member Rosenberg, we have implemented the the status of the penalty in the past. I think I've done it two or three times in my tenure. Uh, I will tell you, we do first try to communicate, educate with the the business owner or even the sign company. Uh, we are now tracking to see who our repeat offenders are and we will not have a short lease with them. But that I I I hear you saying, you know, we have an ordinance that we're not implementing. But I know I have implemented that ordinance twice my time. And for the sake of over two hundred sign permits, I think that's a good track record. I understand your frustration. I'm not trying to minimize it as far as years worth of, you know, problems. But I am doing my best with Craig and my team to identify these and implement the changes. One or two businesses get that fine. I think that starts to spread and they realize that, all right, code is taking something seriously with the ordinance. And hopefully that tries to minimize it in the future. It's worked.
Let me just say, I'm very glad you're here.
Well, thank you for that.
And it sounds like you're making, you're going in the right direction.
All right, David Fox, do you, uh, do you have something to add, David?
Well, I I just, just a bit of clarification, uh, directed either David or Carlos. Um, is there, if if a business is willing to pay the fine. Is there an identifiable recourse for the city beyond, um, just collecting the, collecting the fine? And saying and throwing their arms up and saying, well, it's it's unenforceable. Or is there a legal avenue that they can take to actually, uh, you know, follow a path is I guess is what I'm saying. Beyond paying the fine, what do they do next if there's a problem? If they refuse to to to, uh, to respond?
So I don't leave Carlos, you want that one?
So I I think this would be very similar to what we would do in case of any sort of ordinance violation. Where there's somebody who's just refusing to to comply. Uh, and I think that's across the board for a lot of different ordinances that we have. Ultimately, if we need to, we we, we've done this in the past. We we sit down with the city solicitor and his team. And we come up with a strategy to address that. So, Mr. Fox, I can't give you like, there's not one tool that I can use for all these things. Usually it's case by case. And many times it ends up that we end up in the court system. With the lawyers involved and that's kind of how it transpires from there. Uh, usually, I will tell you, in most instances of violations, particularly with land use issues. I'd say the statistics have to be over ninety percent. When we bring it to the party's attention. When we first bring it to the offending party's attention, and probably over ninety percent of the times, they typically will comply right away. So we're talking about the cases where people are just digging in their heels and they're choosing not to. And those are the kind of cases that we get the city attorneys involved with.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Matt, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Uh, Carlos and David, thank you for helping us out with this. I have a slightly different question. Um, David, what percentage of, um, of businesses use sign companies? Do you know? You have any idea?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
What percentage of businesses that want to, um, put signs in their front yard? What, um, how many of them use sign companies?
Well, I I'd have to do some research on that one, uh, member Hicks. Sorry, I do not know.
Okay.
Interesting question. I know we, you know, for the last year and a half, uh, I think we had about twenty-five companies involved. As far as producing some of those signs for us. Uh, but I don't know the exact number that they actually produced out of the two hundred plus that we did.
So then, yeah, then I guess the next question, the follow up, just not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just, you know, raising this for you to consider. Is, um, whether or not those sign companies, if those signs are established improperly or without proper permitting. If the sign companies face penalties versus the companies, then it'd be less likely that they would actually install the sign. For the other company.
And that was a discussion we had around, a roundtable discussion regarding that. Um, our ordinance only allows us to find the whoever applies for the permit or the property owner. Uh, and the reality is, even if we went back and find the company, ultimately they're going to give it right back to the store or business owner anyway. So I think it, that's when we said, we'll just try to track this internally, see who our repeat offenders are. If there's a company out there, send them a letter, let them know they're on notice and we really would like them to work with us instead of against us.
Great. Thank you for the work.
Yeah, thank you for the work, David. And I think that, you know, and it's on your radar, it's on Carlos's radar and it has been for a while with everybody. But, um, I I think if we can all kind of pull together and figure out what works. And I I truly think a little bit nor notification and, uh, education after the ZBA meeting to say. You know, he- here's one of your two boxes or three boxes that you need to get checked off. You can't put the sign up until you go to ADR and you can't put the sign up till you get a planning board approval would be, would be very beneficial.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Earl, you had a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick question, I, uh, for Mr. Hall. Thank you very much. This is, this is all, uh, good information and I'm I'm glad you're on the case. Um, did I understand you correctly when you said that, uh, the ability to, um. Issue penalties would only happen if a permit was requested? This is sort of a, it sounds to me like a catch twenty-two that if you don't ask permission, then you're not subject to fines. Did I understand?
So this will go back to what Carlos said. So if they never applied for the permit, it would become a land use violation and go through the court system that way. But if we, you know, in the case of Genesis, I think, I'm not sure who, I know Craig Walker was involved in that earlier. We identified it. Once they apply for the permit, then we can double that fee if we go through the process that way.
And just a quick follow up, what what's the number one excuse you get when you approach the folks and say, hey, what's going on with the sign?
In all honesty, it's just a lack of knowledge, awareness that they had to get a permit, uh, especially the small mom and pops and no such. Uh, once they get through ADR, I'd have to talk to Craig to see what his feel is on that.
It's okay, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know. I didn't know it's got to be the big one, so. Okay, gentlemen, well, thank you very much. We, uh, we appreciate your time and no other questions from the board, right? Okay, um, we appreciate your time. We'll let you go and, uh, you, I'm sure you want to stay and watch, but you can now stay and watch as attendees, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
You have a good evening.
You too. Thanks again. Okay, so let's, uh, let's move on. Uh, we will, uh, go into, uh. Our public hearing section, right, Heather? Keep me honest. Are we going to seven, seven A? You're right?
Correct.
Okay, let's, uh, let's read seven A into the record and if, uh, two thirty North Main Street LLC is here. If they could raise their hand, be noticed so we can, uh.
Yeah, I got him in attendance.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, um, just before we start, I can't open this either on the agenda on the city website or on Granicus.
Oh, yeah, unknown error, code four ten.
I couldn't either.
I can't either.
Oh, no, I don't know why.
Sam, are you able to, are you able to present your screen, Sam? Can you open it?
I sure can.
All right, so, uh, I I know I looked at it. I just, for some reason, it's downloading now and it's not opening.
I didn't check all the links.
I have mine.
Do others, do other links work?
I have my link to this one.
The application opens, Earl?
Yes.
On iPad, on Granicus?
Yes, two thirty North Main LLC. This is tenant one and tenant two, right? Yeah. Yeah, I'm open in in Granicus.
So this did actually have a revision to it and I believe that's why we're having issues. So I'll be able to share the screen and we can all see it together.
I'll read it to the record. Um, Scott, Scott Oberton, Oberton? Oberton is is, uh, I've just promoted him to panelist and so Scott, while I'm reading it in, you, if you would like, can share, um. Or can, uh, make yourself visible with video and unmute yourself for your audio. Uh, so seven A is two thirty North Main Street LLC requesting ADR approval. For the installation of two new non-illuminated wall signs at two thirty North Main Street in the urban commercial district. And I would ask Sam to just give a short summary of where we're at here. Once you share your, now that you got your screen shared.
Sure. Um, so this sign package came to ADR earlier this month. Um, and ADR had originally, uh, recommended to table, um, because what we received is on the second page here. Just tenant one and tenant two, and this effectively serves as a placeholder for future, uh, tenant signs. And these signs are going to be logo signs, which is the aesthetic element of signs that ADR reviews. So because it just said tenant one and tenant two as placeholders, ADR didn't have anything to review, hence why they recommended tabling. Uh, since that meeting, the applicant has, uh, provided us with a, um. A rendering for, uh, hearing enhancement centers. Uh, this is the logo sign for tenant one. Uh, and will come back in the future for the second tenant panel.
Okay, can you, uh, can you show me the application, Sam, as well? So I can, since I can't see that. Okay, next, what, is there a next page?
Uh, these are the the pages.
So that's just the application, right? There's no report or anything for staff. Okay, so you can go back to the rendering. So I have a question on the big, the big giant two thirty. Um, is it, is it my understanding from reading some of the ADR minutes? That that two thirty North Main Street sign does not fall into a sign, uh, ordinance? Uh, or it's, it's part of the directory? Is that, what, can you explain that to me, Sam, or?
That is, that is correct. Um, so I spoke, uh, with Craig Walker at length about this. Um, and typically, so this is kind of a unique case because we haven't typically seen, um, large address signs. Uh, on buildings. Um, on occasion, they've been included in sign packages. Um, for example, Capital Commons, they had, um, in their sign package, they included their address. Um, not required, um, ADR, uh, I believe we don't have any authority to regulate, um, address signs. Other than, um, there is a minimum standard that they have to provide, uh, the numbered address for, uh, fire safety. Um, that could be seen on the Dartmouth Hitchcock sign that came before this board about a year ago.
Okay, so if the, if the, if the person, just I'm playing the devil's advocate here. So on the, on the picture you got up on the screen, on the bottom, uh, the bottom left side, if you had a five foot long. By six foot wide circle that said two thirty North Main Street as, say, that was the name of your business. Even though, you know, if you called the business two thirty North Main and and you just put that two thirty North Main up there, you wouldn't be subject to ADR. Or to, uh, it doesn't go against your sign package in totality as far as how much they can put on the, on the side of the building.
Uh, I think that would be up for debate. Uh, if that's the name of the business, that would, I believe constitute a logo and therefore be subject to regulations.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, so before us, what we have before us, just ADR approval for the non-illuminated wall sign. At two thirty North Main and it wasn't on consent because, uh, ADR had recommended pulling it.
And and we received this new, uh, tenant panel, the hearing enhancement centers.
Okay, so any, uh, does the, uh, any member of the board have any questions or concerns regarding this application? I can't see, hold on. I can't see everybody. Hang on a minute.
No, I don't have, I don't have anyone raising their hand. Um, but I I think, I I don't know if you want to formally open the public hearing. I think that the, uh. Applicant might want, might want to address board.
Yeah, I will. Um, so no, no member of the, the board has any questions for us, right? So we'll open the public hearing and, uh, welcome Scott, uh, Oberton, Oberton, Aberton? Sorry, sorry for all that negative sign talk before you got here, if you're the sign guy for this project.
No, on the contrary, I was glad to be part of it because, um, there is a frustration in getting permits in the city of Concord. But it, I think it's much more basic than than what you'd understand. And that is that if there was simply an outline of the procedure given to the sign applicant from day one. That these are the steps involved and this is the waiting period. Um, I actually installed a sign, uh, before I had a permit last year, which I didn't realize. Because I thought once I had the permit from, uh, code enforcement from Craig and his team. And then I had ADR, I thought I was all set to install it.
Yeah.
Um, I installed it the next day because we, we were confident that we were going to get it. It was a very nice looking sign, very much in keeping with the, the downtown of Concord. Installed it the next day and I had the unfortunate, uh, experience of having the Concord monitor come by and take pictures of it. And publish it in that day's publication. So I got a call immediately that said, you know, what are you doing? You don't have a permit yet. I had no idea. I had to go in front of the planning board in addition to these other two. So I think it's something as basic as just making that information more available. I understand people put up permits without applications, but I never do because I totally believe in the process. So, and and Heather was really wonderful, um, at, you know, walking me through this process. But I think it's as simple as an outline handed to the applicant that says, these are the steps and you really can't install the sign before this point.
So I I'm pretty confident that I, I hopefully David, her hall and Carlos are still listening. I'm sure they're riveted to the, to the, uh, to the, uh, to the meeting here. But I I think your point is well taken and that was kind of what I was saying. I didn't say it quite as eloquent as you, as you did. But, you know, if if we can have people come through the ZBA process and say, hey, here's, here's step one. You got one of the three boxes checked. You need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this. And give it back to them and say, here's the process you need to follow before you put the sign up, so.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate it if you're, if you're doing it the right way, even though you were one of those people who put it up the wrong way, but.
And I did get fined and I did get a double fine, just for the record.
Okay, good.
And I hated not passing on to my customers.
Ah, I'm glad to hear it. The system's working. Teresa's glad to hear it as well, too. Just, I know Teresa's glad to hear it as well.
Question.
All right, so apologize. So go ahead and tell us about this project if you could.
Okay, so, so my application initially to the ADR was simply for approval of a directory for the building. We didn't have any tenants at the time, so I, I submitted the application for the directory for the building. So that when we did get tenants, we could say, this is what's approved, this is where your sign is going to go. Um, subsequently, we got one tenant for the building and that's why I updated the, the drawing. Hopefully gave you a lot more information as far as the fabrication of the, of the signage. And put in hearing enhancement centers logo so you could see what that one's going to look like. I do understand that another tenant is going to have to go in front of ADR for approval for their logo also. But what I'm looking for is approval to do this directory with the address sign. Um, and I'm going to address that, no pun intended, but I'm going to address that sign. Because I think that in the case of this building, it was a really, the only way we could identify the building well. Was to make a really big impactful address and get the building known as two thirty North Main Street. Um, the building's very close to the road. We can't have a freestanding sign because of that. So we opted to go on both ends of the, of the building with the signage. And, um, so that was why I went in with that application without the artwork on it initial.
Right. Okay, um, the building looks great, by the way. This is the Concord, uh, what was it? Reaper Graphics Building, right? The old printer was there. So the building looks great. I've been by a couple of times. Okay, any questions from the board regarding this application? Heather, can you check on the audience? Is there any member of the audience that has any questions regarding this application? If not, uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve that sign as submitted or have a, uh, uh, recommendation for a change? Uh, if not, I'll take a recommendation to approve as submitted. There's no ADR recommendations, so it's, uh, it's, you're going to approve it based on what's there. And I, I s- assume, uh, Mr. Oberton, that, uh, the future tenant won't be there. It'll just be a white, uh, what, you know, transparent sign, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I I move, I move acceptance.
So we got a motion by Counselor Pierce and seconded by John Regan, uh, all those, oops, sorry, Heather.
Uh, one, I didn't know if you wanted to formally close the public hearing. And two, you should probably use the language of approval since there is an alternative motion for completeness or acceptance of other applications. And we want to clarify that we're actually recommend, you know, approving this particular what's in front of us.
Okay, what did he say?
Acceptance, just.
Acceptance, okay. So we'll, we'll close the public hearing and ask Earl to make a motion to move his approval, approval as submitted.
invoking the other A word, I will, uh, move approval of this application.
Okay, John, your accept, your second still stands?
I believe it was David who seconded it.
Oh, okay, David, your second still stands?
Yes, it does.
Okay, uh, so we'll do a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
You're on mute. Whoop, there you go.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
I think that's everybody. Uh, member Hicks?
Uh, aye.
All ayes, all right. You are all set. Thank you very much for your honesty on the sign, uh, on the sign conversation. And, uh, we will, uh, we'll look forward to seeing that new sign up soon.
Super, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming. All right, let's, uh, let's move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, item seven B. If we could read that into the record and queue up, uh, Mr. Penoyer, uh.
Yep, uh, seven B is Sheldon Penoyer. Yep. Uh, seven B is Sheldon Pnoyer on behalf of Chase Pnoyer and Kelly Buchanan. I requesting ADR approval for a building permit in a performance district for the addition of a dormer to the back of a residential building uh, at thirty-one Warren Street in the Civic Performance District. Um, and I am now Sheldon, allowing you to talk and promoting you to panelist. Yeah, I don't know if uh you'd like to open the public hearing or if you want, I mean, I don't think we have a staff update.
No staff update. It doesn't look like there's any type of report either. Let's uh attach this. It's just a, it's just a plan set, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so let's uh, let's open the public hearing. Welcome to the table. Uh, if you guys could uh introduce yourselves for the record.
Oh, I did not, I tried to promote to panelists, but they didn't go. And, uh, so just give them a minute. Now they're there.
On mute?
Yep, there, you guys are, uh, your video's stopped and you're muted, so you need to unmute and, if you wanna video, put yourselves on video.
Hello, everyone. My name's Chase Pnoyer. I'm the future owner of thirty-one Warren Street.
Okay, tell us a little bit about this project if you could.
Yeah, uh, so this is taking um, a commercial building that's used as an office space and converting it back to uh, a residence. It's, will be a single family for me and my significant other and um, as you can see in the plans, um, we're doing some interior modifications, but the big thing is the dormer on that south side uh to open up the bathroom.
Okay, any uh, any staff comments, concerns, questions regarding this? We didn't ask for a staff summary, so we'll.
Sure.
Spot, Sam, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, this went before ADR, uh, earlier this month. Um, ADR was very, uh, generally quite complimentary uh, to this proposal. Um, the uh, addition of the dormer is uh, what triggers uh, ADR and therefore Planning Board uh review. Um, so uh, Sheldon and Chase and Kelly were there and they briefly uh explained what they're doing. Um, uh, I believe that you also will find in your uh packet a um a, a, a hand-drawn landscape plan uh to go along with this as well. Um, and they will be removing some of the pavement, uh, yet still providing the required uh two parking spaces for a single-family residence. Um, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Sam.
So when you look at this uh from a plan set, in our plans, it's a two dot one page three of three, kind of, all we're talking about, Sam, is just the the small little shed dormer that's on the, the, I guess, the back of the house. Um, on the top right, if I'm looking at three, the plan, the plan set, uh, the page number three, the dormer is the small dormer on the roof uh on the bottom plan, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, so any uh, any member of the audit, of the board have any questions or comments regarding this uh, this application? Any members of the audience wish to address this application, Heather? No?
Don't have any. Oh, I do have uh one hand. I have a Susan, it's listed as Susan Hillsgrove and um it says promote, I have to promote you to panelist, allow you to talk. So I'm doing that now.
Okay, uh, welcome to the table. Is this the Susan Hillsgrove?
She is, uh, her videos on off, let's see if I can.
I don't see that she's muted.
Her, her audio is not coming up. There she goes. Can you, can you um?
It is the Susan Hillsgrove. How are you, Sue? Can you hear me?
We're not getting um, audio from, from you. I don't know if you might need to call in the number. Um, so that, it looks like you don't have audio hooked up. Maybe you can write in though, a um is there a way? No, I don't see an option even for you to pu, to do a chat.
Can you hear us, Sue?
Can't hear us.
Can't hear us?
She put her, she turned her video off.
Okay. Um, hang on just a second. I know her, so let me just see. I don't know if I've got her in my context.
She can also send us an email if she'd like to speak. And we can read it in. Said that she had an older version of something and was uh challenging.
An older version of computer stuff? I see her back on there again.
I think so. She's still there. It's just her video is, she turned her video off, I think.
Well, she's calling me, hold on.
Yeah, there you go.
I don't think I can put her on, though.
Well, maybe you could answer and just put her on speaker.
Sue?
Hi.
Hey, I'm gonna put you on speaker, so we'll see if we can hear you, okay?
We can, we can hear her.
Can you hear her? Go ahead, Sue.
My only question I did out back and I was just curious of the timeframe. How long was this gonna take and, you know, what it was going to be for the neighborhood? Cause I also have construction next door, so a little anxious about the additional construction.
Hey, just for the record, Sue, could you tell us, uh, we got your name, but could you tell us where you live?
Yes, I live on fourteen Blake Street, and that is um adjacent out back to um this building on Warren Street.
Okay, so your, your question is more of, more construction in your neighborhood and when's it gonna start and when's it gonna stop?
Yeah, cause I have the Green Street pro, project going right next door, so this is kind of, you know, boxing me in, so I was just curious.
Gotcha, okay. Uh, Mr. Pnoyer, can you uh, could you address that?
Yeah, um, hello, Sue. I hope to be your future neighbor one day, first of all. Um, secondly, uh, we are hoping that the dormer will take about two weeks. Uh, it really won't be, won't be too quick, and I'd imagine that that will be the most disruptive part about this whole process uh, to you, and the rest will be mostly interior uh modifications, so um, maybe, maybe a month, uh, two weeks to a month. Cause we're, we're also adding a window in, or two.
Did you hear that, Sue?
Unfortunately, Chris, I'm not getting any sound anymore.
Oh, you're not getting anything? You can't hear him talking?
No.
Oh, I don't know what to do about that. He said it's gonna, it's gonna take about uh, two weeks to do the dormer and uh in totality, hopefully less than a month to do the, the work itself, but the.
So uh, a month to do the exterior alterations?
Exterior alterations.
I, I, I don't have any problems with that. I'm glad to see the building being taken care of.
Okay.
That means, that means a lot to hear.
That means a lot. He's here, he's, he's appreciating your comments, so. Okay, hey, look at this. Look how, look at the technology working for us. Okay, thank you for participating, Sue, and uh, we'll talk to you soon. Okay, bye. Alright, so that doesn't happen very often, but hey, that worked.
That was so analog.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so uh, any other questions? We have anybody else uh, who's uh, that has a question, Heather? Okay, so that question, if everybody got it, was just around the timing and how long it'll take to do that. Okay, so let's uh, let's move into approval pers, perspective. Uh, I don't have a report or anything. Is it just to approve the plans as submitted? Heather?
Correct.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to a plan, uh, approve those plans as submitted? ADR did review them, didn't have any comments or concerns. They did like it, so someone like to make a motion, we'll accept that and move on?
I move ADR approval. Second.
Okay, John Regan's made that motion to approve uh as submitted with ADR approval. Uh, David Fox uh seconded, uh, let's do a roll call vote, so all those in favor?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, uh, that motion passes, so that is all set. Thank you very much uh for your testimony, Mr. Pnoyer, and uh we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you. Uh, item seven C for Concord Hospital, if we could read that into the record, Heather?
Concord Hospital requests a conditional use permit and ADR approval to allow for a building sign over twenty-five feet above grade and a second conditional use permit for a directory sign at one sixteen Langley Parkway in the Civic Performance District. So the, these are two conditional use permits uh, and ADR approval because they are signs, so I just kept them under the um, design review section.
Okay, um, so is the, if the applicant's here, if we could promote them?
Uh, Mr. Jemiti, I'm not sure if I'm saying it right. I will let him correct me. Uh.
Hi, good evening. It's uh, Jemeti. Yes, very close.
Would you like me to promote you to panelist, so you can share video?
Uh, I may not have been able to vi, enabled video when I logged in, so it might not make a difference.
Okay.
My apologies.
Well, welcome, uh, welcome to the table. Let's uh, let's get a quick staff update if we could on this. I don't know whose this is, but if we could get a uh a staff update, that would be great.
Sure, um, so uh, this has kind of been in our system for a, a few months now. Um uh, originally, I believe they came before ADR back in uh, June or July. Um, at that time, uh, they were proposing, um, so this is part of that th, a three sign package. Um, the monument sign was approved earlier by uh consent, um, but because these two items need their respective CUP permits, that's why we have separated them. Um, originally, all signs, except for the directory sign, were going to be internally illuminated, uh, which is not permitted in the Civic Performance District. The applicant sought variance relief and uh, was not granted the variance. Um, in my conversations with Mr. Jemeti, um, the applicant stated that, that they will be uh, the same design, just without the internal illumination. Um, ADR uh just had some general questions about the construction and design, um but overall recommended approval as submitted, uh, with some minor tweaks to the directory sign, just for readability.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jemeti, any comments or questions regarding this?
I do have a comment on this. Uh, first, I wanna thank Sam for helping guide me through this. This has been uh, a little challenging. It's my first, uh, my first sign I've brought through the city process. Um, I have a apologies, I have a memo from the planning board dated this, uh, September sixteenth twenty twenty for a conditional use permit for the, the building sign, the one that's over twenty-six feet above grade. And there's a line in it, the last sentence of the narrative before the recommendations says that the applicant has stated that the s, design will remain the same but will not be illuminated. And I believe uh, Sam and I are probably on the same page, but at that meeting, we agreed that it would not be internally illuminated, but we would look to illuminate it from, from above or, or below or, or different means. Uh, once, you know, once we got a little further along.
So we can make that as part of the, as part of the, when we approve it or don't approve it, we'll make that, uh, we'll make that note that, uh, it should say that, uh uh, but will not be internally illuminated. So the very last sentence is, but it will not be internally illuminated, is that right?
Thank you, yes, that would be, that would be correct. And other than that, nothing has changed for the project.
Okay, so before us is to grant ADR approval for the design of the building sign. Uh, twenty-six feet above grade at one sixteen Langley Parkway and for the installation of a directory sign at two fifty feet, uh, to grant the CUP approval for installation of the building sign twenty-six feet above grade at one sixteen Langley Parkway, and for the installation of a directory sign at two fifty Pleasant Street. So I'm sure neither one of those signs has been put up, right, Mr. Jemeti?
No, sir.
If you caught the earlier part of the, of, part of the meeting. So uh, any questions, comments, concerns from the board? Questions about this?
Question.
Okay, Earl?
Uh, just to this last point about the sign not being internally illuminated, where would that be in the motion? Or would it be?
Uh, we'll just make note of that, uh, as part of the motion that say that uh, the correction will be made to the recommendation by staff that it, it uh, it will remain the same as the application it was submitted, but it will not be intern, internally illuminated.
I will note that in my ADR action report.
And uh, I see a hand up, Heather. I don't know if Martha Drucker has her hand up or she has a comment or question regarding this. Can't hear you. You're muted. Hello?
This is Martha Drucker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Martha. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to um, make sure that the applicant's aware that we wanna make sure that the sign is not located in the future right of way of phase three, three of Langley Parkway.
Oh, good question, yep.
So, as long as on the plan it shows that it's outside the future um, plan for the phase three of Langley Parkway um, be a condition, that would be great.
I can show my screen. We received a plan from their engineer, uh, showing just that, and I have it up right now, so, I'll be real quick. Um, so this phase three Langley Parkway has been identified as this stretch and the uh, approximate size and location of new sign is right here.
Perfect.
And Sam, what's the distance from that sign location to the dotted line for construction?
Five feet.
Okay, so my only concern is that in building phase three, um, we may need more than five feet for the construction of this phase. So, maybe if we had an easement or um, I just think to, to go forward with phase three, we're probably gonna need five, more than five feet when this is under construction. Or the sign would have to be relocated at the expense of the applicant.
Yeah, I don't know how to address that. Any, any recommendations from staff on how that should be handled?
Well, I think Martha makes a good point, and I would, I would ask um Mr. Jemeti, if there would be, what they would prefer. Would they prefer to have some condition that the sign be relocated at their expense when, if and when that time comes? Or would you prefer to move the sign further back?
I'd be with, I'd be content with moving of the sign when phase three uh mobilizes.
Okay, so we need to make sure to make that uh, condition of the approval.
Okay.
And I think en, engineering would be fine with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, if and, if and when phase three goes through, so. Okay, so let's uh, you're gonna need to keep me honest. Somebody from staff, you're gonna keep me honest on the two changes we'll have to the motion, so uh let's open it up and see if there's anybody in the audience or any member of the public that has a question or comment regarding this application? No? I don't see anybody. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and we will draft up a motion here to we've got before us one point one and one point two, which I'm gonna take together uh, to grant ADR approval for the design of the building sign. Uh, and then to grant a CUP, or grant ADR approval and to grant the CUP as one recommendation. Noting that the uh applicant has stated that the design will remain the same, but the uh sign will not be in, internally illuminated, and that the sign, uh, if is, uh, if it is in the way of phase three right of way, that uh, the sign will have to be moved at the uh, at the owner's expense. Is that sufficient for a motion or for a, someone to make a motion around, Heather?
Uh, I'll defer to Sam if that's, captures everything that he made notes on.
I think that's it. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to uh, to grant that approval as so eloquently read into the record?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Pierce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David Fox. Uh, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
You're on mute, Teresa. You're still on mute.
I know, I was trying to get off. Um, aye.
Aye. Uh, Member Hicks?
Aye.
And Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion ca, passes. Uh, you're all set, Mr. Jemeti. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh, that finishes up uh, item seven in our agenda for design review applications. We'll move on to item eight, which is uh, site plan subdivisions and conditional use permits and move on to eight A. If you could read that into the record, Heather, and uh, welcome uh, anybody that's here for eight A to the table.
Yep, uh, we have Mike, Michael Foulds requesting a conditional use permit to allow a second curb cut where only one is otherwise permitted, uh, based on the frontage at sixty West Parish Road. at sixty West Parish Road in the open space residential district. And I'd ask Sam to do a staff summary and Mister Folds, I have unmuted you, would you like me to make you a panelist so you can share video?
Uh I'm sitting in my daughter's pink bedroom, so I'd say no.
Okay, we'll just keep you on, we'll keep you on attendee and um I think Sam might have a a staff summary.
Okay.
Sure.
It's your night, it's your night for staff summaries, huh Sam?
It was a busy month. Uh so uh like Heather said, uh this is a conditional use permit for a second curb cut um where two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage would normally be qu- uh required. The applicant has a hundred and uh sixty-eight feet of frontage. And uh this the location of this second curb cut uh does meet the distances um between other curb cuts on adjacent lots um as would be normally required. Um uh however, um uh staff has talked um at some length internally about this. Um and it is uh uh engineering has uh stated that the effect of not having to back out onto West Parish Road could be achieved by a hammerhead uh in front of the house uh as opposed to a a U-shaped kinda looped driveway. Um which uh would reduce the the need for a second curb cut. Um so staff is not making any recommendation uh one way or the other to uh approve or deny this conditional use permit, um but we'll leave it up to the board.
Okay, thank you Sam for that update and and just Mister Folds, just uh for a heads up perspective, we are uh as a board generally not in favor of of additional curb cuts in the road in any shape. Uh the the um the fact that you gotta back out onto uh onto West Parish Road is is certainly concerns, uh you know, uh terms for concern from our perspective, but if you can give us a quick update on on um you know, on on is this the only feasible option for you, which is the U-shape, or are you aimable to a hammerhead uh to keep your curb curb cut to one curb cut?
Um in in my mind, it is the only feasible uh solution. Due to the short length of the driveway. Um you get more than one car in there, even with a hammerhead, the ability to turn around is non-existent unless you start taking out. You know, my wife's beautiful garden and the stone wall surrounding it, uh which is part of the uh curb appeal of the neighborhood. But on the um if you're looking from the road, the right side of the driveway and backside of the driveway have a significant drop off, uh to do site work there would not be feasible needless to say, and doing anything on the right side of the driveway would take away from um any privacy we have, which is the whole reason we moved to this neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, again, looking at the, you know, we look at the plans on on page two of our plans, you look at the plans and say, my goodness, there's tons of room over to the right and there's tons of room, you know, towards the house, but again, I think seeing the visual of the picture, it obviously drops off pretty substantially, it drops off to the right-hand side of the house as well, the same at the same level.
Yeah, yep, um and not to mention having to take out an entire row of big beautiful oaks that are keeping good neighbors, good neighbors.
Yeah, well put, uh any member of the board have any questions, concerns regarding this application? Earl?
I I have a quick question, what what is not knowing, what is the um what is the minimum requirement for a a circular driveway? I'm sympathetic, cause I have one.
Uh two 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 hundred and fifty feet of frontage, uh unfortunate, uh correct me if I'm wrong Sam, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Uh to so, you know, unfortunately for me, that is the only border of my property that is not two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, sorry, another hand go up, Heather, did you have a question? Heather?
I think Counselor Pierce first.
Okay, no, I'll counsel Pierce, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, um is this uh section of West Parish Road uh flat or is it on a grade, Mister Folds?
The area in front of my house is flat, but the um I'm sorry, just moved here, so the numbers are a little off, uh going towards Hutchin is uh fifty-eight Parish. Um starts to drop downwards, um people go way too fast in that section, there's a a blind curve on that section, and then going towards Carter Hill, it immediately goes upwards, the the good thing I have going for me is there is a culvert between my property and I believe sixty-two is the number um for any uh drainage coming off of the Carter Hill elevation.
Oh, okay, thank you, that that was the basis of my question.
Okay.
Um if I may, I have a a very good aerial imagery up right now that may um actually shed quite a bit of light on the situation.
Yeah, please.
Share my screen now. Um this will help um to show the the grade change, so this is the five hundred and fifty foot contour right here. And here's five hundred, so there's a fifty-foot drop in elevation over a span of three hundred and fifty feet, so um a fair drop off. But you you can get a good sense of of the road location and then um the the screening that the applicant talked about in the in the stone wall in the front.
So what's over to the right-hand side there, that car that's there, but oh well, no, stay right in there Sam, if you can zoom right back in there.
Sure.
What's to the right-hand side of where the car is now, it looks like half a hammerhead already there?
Oh, this right here, I would leave that to the applicant to explain.
Okay, so in front of the car is the future uh mudroom, which you know, haven't even applied for yet uh with the building department, but um oh, there we go, to the right, yeah, so where that that deck is, is gonna be a future mudroom uh and entryway, so pulling any for, you know, you can't pull any more forward from where that car is, um and then where that oak is on the front corner of the property uh immediately drops down into the woods. I mean, easily six to eight feet over, uh I mean, immediately from the edge of my driveway.
Okay. Okay, thanks Sam.
Sure.
Can I just offer a clarification? Um so when we looked at this as staff, we were not suggesting in any way, shape or form that he put paving or a hammerhead in any other location other than what he's already showing is paved. So we had questioned, you know, you're gonna you're gonna provide this loop. Why not just, you know, do a put a paved area in front of the house exactly where you're proposing a paved area in front of the house? And instead of just continuing on, you pull in and then you back up and then you pull out, so so we were not we at no point were we suggesting that he disrupt any slopes or any other area of the property that he's not already proposing to pave.
Yeah, so so totally understand, I I don't know if Sam can pull that picture up again, the 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 second one you had there, um so, you know, again, once once a mudroom the mudroom would actually come to where there, I mean, I know you can't see it, but in front of that deck is a door, so that mudroom's gonna come six feet in, maybe eight feet in closer than the front edge of that deck. Um so again, I couldn't pull in, I shouldn't even be pulling in that far with the mudroom there. Meaning, there's no way to do a turnaround with if, you know, if my wife's parked on the right-hand side of me, I actually have a third car as well, you can't even fit three cars properly in the driveway and be able to turn around, um th- there would not be a way to 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 back in, I guess is is my point.
It kinda looks like there's already a a a driveway across the front of your yard now.
Oh, one hundred percent, I'm sure it was used that way before I bought it, but I'm trying to do things right and ask permission.
Absolutely.
Uh you know, I I'd also have to pull in, i- if you look at you know, again, that's the fifty-two foot wide garden there is has got a rock wall, so it is actually elevated, you know, I'd have to take off the left, yeah, right about where Sam drew the line, um part of that left-hand side just to create a proper you know, curve.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Comment more than anything. If you were, I'm looking at the picture, if you where your car is, if you were to pull in there and be able to turn left as far, at least as far as the front door. Then you would use the space where the car is now to back into and then go out frontwards.
Right, that's what staff was saying, is a hammerhead, so they would, they they, you know, they
Oh, so it wouldn't be to the right?
It wouldn't be to try to be in front of the house.
Yeah, there there w- w- with with the mudroom on there, there wouldn't be enough length, right now, there's the welder, that's what that red spot is, um
Yes.
There there wouldn't be enough length to do that, um and a- a- again, we're we're showing one car, I I have three, uh it gets interesting quick and let alone hav- having anyone over to the house.
Yeah, I can completely understand, my motivation for putting my circular driveway in here on Auburn Street.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any uh any member of the audience have any questions Heather?
Uh nope.
Okay, um so let's uh close the public hearing and uh any further discussion from staff or from the board? Matt?
Yeah, I think from what I've heard, I'm I'm certainly, I can empathize with the applicant, but um we have held firm on no additional curb cuts for situations like this for years and years. Uh so I I don't see any reason to support an additional curb cut here.
Okay, any other comments on the board? So we've got uh we've got the application in front, did I miss anybody? No, no other co- comments? So we've got the application and it's really, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, either um to re- to approve this the uh the CUP or deny the CUP. Um and again, under twenty-seven, uh twenty-eight, seven, eight B of the zoning ordinance, which allows for a second driveway associated curb cut at sixty West Parish Road. Um let's uh let's take it, uh we I'll just basically ask the question, would someone like to make a motion to approve this conditional use permit as submitted? Do we have a motion? So uh we have no motion to approve, so we've got imagine a motion to deny. Anybody like to make a motion to deny the CUP as submitted?
I'll I'll make a motion to approve it and then let the vote land where it may.
Okay, we have a second on the motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second uh from uh John Regan, uh all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
No.
Uh Member Hicks?
No.
Member Fox?
Nay.
Uh Member Regan?
Yes.
Member Rosenberg?
No.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
So you've got uh two yeses and five nays or four nays, I'm sorry.
Four nays, so that motion does not pass, so uh we'll die on the table with a uh without a uh without an approval, do you need to do it as a denial Heather or a non-approval okay?
No, you you basically just made the motion and appro- and passed the motion not to approve the application, so you're on.
Sorry Mister Folds for your time and energy here, and I can sympathize again, but the but and like I said right out of the get-go, the the second curb cuts for the city are just a a real deal breaker for us.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for participating. All right, uh let's move on to item eight B on our agenda, if we could, S and H Land Services, could we read that into the record and invite that applicant to the table?
S and H Land Services on behalf of the Laura M. Jobin Trust of two thousand and six requesting minor subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision of a property located on Blackwater Road in the residential open space district. And I do have a few people to um allow to speak it, if Beth wants to give a summary.
Beth, Beth, you got a summary, you get to do a summary.
Yeah, well, I done the lot the past few months.
It was Sam's turn this month, he's just been watching the last few months, so welcome back Beth, give us a summary of uh this uh this project if you could.
Sure, it's not a long summary, it's a pretty simple um subdivision, they're subdividing off a two-acre lot for the construction of a single-family home. And the remainder lot is current is proposed to remain undeveloped, um there weren't requesting any waivers. Um they provided revised drawings today and have addressed all of our comments, so hopefully anyone, I can
So there is a, there is a determination completeness component to this as well, correct?
And a DRI, yeah.
And a DRI, but it hasn't been done yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got a determination completeness component, we'll the we'll hit that first and then we'll put the project up on the screen. Uh would someone like to make a, so this project has been determined complete by staff and not a development of regional impact, would someone like to make a motion to uh find that it's been determined complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's made by John Regan, seconded by
Second.
By Matt Hicks, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Uh Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay.
We do have, um I have allowed to speak uh Rich To- Rich Jobin, Tom Hewat. I apologize if I said that wrong, and uh Ryan Fowler. I don't know if any of you would like to be promoted to panelists for video?
Um this is Tom Hewitt, if you could promote Ryan Fowler from our office, you could do that.
And I shared my screen, Ryan had sent
Perfect. Uh would you like me to proceed Mister Chairman?
Please, yes, go ahead.
Uh Tom Hewitt with S and H Land Services, uh I'm here with Ryan Fowler from our office as well. Uh we are proposing to subdivide one approximately two-acre lot off an existing nineteen-acre parcel. Uh which would leave about a seventeen-acre remainder parcel. The intent is to build a single-family house on the new lot, um that would be served by septic and on-site well. Um we are not requesting any waivers, um we didn't seek any variances at this time. Uh we did get some comments from staff, and as Beth said, Ryan's been working on addressing those, and we think that we have. Um Mister Jobin is here representing the trust, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, congratulations on no waivers and no no variances, that's just about unheard of in today's in today's
Doesn't come often.
It does not come very often, so yeah, kudos on that. Um Mister Jobin, if you'd like to add something, please uh feel free.
Thank you. Uh I think Tom and Ryan can give you all the information you need and uh you know, Sean, needing any additional information for me, I think they'll uh will be in good hands listening to them.
Perfect, um it goes, uh looks like it's pretty straightforward. Uh members of the board, any questions, concerns, comments, questions that you'd like addressed? No? Uh any member of the audience Heather, have any hand up and uh wants to address this application? I didn't give anybody much warning, so if you have a question, please just uh raise your hand and let Heather know that uh you have a question regarding it.
I think you're good.
Okay, uh seeing none, we will uh we'll move right ahead if that's okay, uh with the board's approval, we'll move ahead here, we've got uh the determination of completeness component done, we've got uh comments from engineering uh technical review comments, and then uh on item three point one uh to grant the minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision at Blackwater Road, subject to the following uh precedent conditions uh one through six and subsequent conditions one. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
Uh move approval.
Motion's been made by Counselor Pierce, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David Fox, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved, so you guys waited the whole time, but it was as quick as we could make it, so congrats on that and good luck with the project, it looks like a good one, and uh we'll see you back here hopefully for new buildings going in the ground.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item uh eight C, uh Mountain Lake Heating uh Fuel LLC, if we can read that into the record?
Uh Mountain Lake Heating Fuel LLC requesting minor site plan approval for the conversion of a two-unit building to a four-unit building. And the construction of additional parking spaces at twenty-eight South Street in the downtown residential district. Um I do have, not sure if I have anybody here. If there's anybody here on behalf of this application, can you uh raise your hand? Um I I have two phone numbers, I'm not sure who they are. That you can repit the, I'm I'm going to allow That you can, pit the, I'm, I'm going to allow these two. I have a eleven thirty-three phone number and an eighty thirty-one phone number, I've allowed you to speak, I don't know if either of you are here on behalf of that application.
Yeah, if you are, if you could unmute and just identify yourself, if not, just keep yourself on mute, we'll, uh, we'll put you back down.
I have, uh, I don't think there's anybody here on behalf of this application.
Okay, well, let's, uh, push them back down into the, into the audience if we could, and let's get a staff update on this. While we're seeing if anybody's here.
Sure. Um, so, uh, this is a conversion of a duplex to a four-unit. Um, the applicant had to receive, uh, some variance relief to be able to do this conversion, uh, given existing site conditions. Uh, one variance was to allow for a total lot coverage of fifty-six percent, where the maximum is sixty. Um, that was granted in August, um, the second variance, um, is relative to the driveway width. Um, they are, the existing driveway is ten feet wide, um, where the minimum would normally be eighteen feet with a conditional use permit. Um, but there was conflict with between, basically, the space between the house and the property line is not, it, it's just under twenty-three feet, which would allow for that eighteen-foot driveway and then the five-foot pavement setback, uh, so they sought variance relief and they received that in September. Um, they've also requested a waiver, uh, to not show, uh, the municipal, uh, utilities, um, invert elevations of, uh, sewer and drainage, um, reason being is that they are, uh, uh, not making any changes to these, uh, systems, um, and staff is supportive of this waiver, uh, for those reasons. Um, uh, other than that, we've received a number of, uh, iterations and revisions to this plan set. Um, the, the applicant and, uh, their consultant has been, uh, very responsive, uh, to staff comments.
All right, it's, um, seems to have the same problem on my plan set here, Sam, where I can't download the plan set, so I'm getting an error.
Well, that could be because of the changes, so I'd be happy to share my screen.
If you can and just walk us through the changes, I just want to confirm too, you said that no changes are taking place to the sewer and water, even though the unit's being, going from a two to a four unit?
Correct.
Okay. That's a, that's a trick.
Can I speak, uh?
Yes, absolutely, who's this?
Yes, Todd Welch from Engineering.
Oh, yes, hi, Todd.
Hi, um, so I think there are gonna be some required changes to the, uh, water service, um, just due to, uh, sprinkler requirements, fire, for fire suppression. But the sewer may, may end up being okay, uh, they just gotta camera it and check the condition.
Okay, so does that change anything, Sam, on our side as far as, um, variances or anything, if they're, they're gonna have water changes for bringing in sprinkler, uh, sprinkler lines, they're gonna have to have more water service than they probably have now, right?
Yep, and, and that is fine, um, that can be a condition of approval, but that does not affect the, uh, the waiver request as that was strictly sewer and, and drainage, not water.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so you got the plan set in front of you there, if you can, uh,
Sure.
Give us a quick overview.
So, these lines here-
Anybody else, is any of the, any other member of the board, are you guys able to download the plan set and look at the plan set, or is it just me?
I can see it.
Okay.
I have problems too, Rich.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, go ahead, Sam.
Sure, um, so here is the existing curb cut on South Street, these lines in this area here, this is the driveway. Um, here is the ten-foot property line setback, um, so keeping the existing drive, uh, cars would come in, there's a barn back here. Uh, this counts for two parking spaces. Um, and this is the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and then here is the required handicap accessible parking space, so eight spaces for four units, um, and this area here is proposed to be a permeable, uh, pavement surface, uh, to help with, uh, some drainage. Um, this is, uh, there's a, a low spot in the block, uh, right about here. Um, so that was a concern, um, so they're doing, uh, some permeable paving to help mitigate any drainage concerns.
So you're gonna get eight parking spots in that little area?
Yep.
Wow. Okay. And this is a business, right? This is not gonna be a, a residence?
No, this is a, a four, four-unit residential.
Four-unit residence, okay, so I saw Mountain Lake Heating and Oil, I just, is there, there's no commercial use at all, it's still gonna be residential?
Nope, that's just the, the ownership, is an LLC.
Okay. Okay, and the, and there's nobody here for this application, is that right?
No, um, but Mar- Martha Drucker with Engineering has her hand raised, if you'd like to call on her.
Go ahead, Martha.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the board, I just wanted to note on the sewer service, um, you know, as Todd mentioned, we would like to have that video to make sure it's in the, a condition for the four units. However, if it's not, if the existing sewer is not adequate, uh, to service the four units, we may need, um, the, um, invert elevations of the existing sewer that they were requesting a waiver for. So I, I'd like, I think it would be good to put a condition on the approval that if the existing sewer is not adequate to service the four unit, um, you know, approval that, um, they may have to come back and give us existing elevations if we have to go to an alternate plan for a new service.
So that would, we, we could put into the, into the motion at the sewer inspection via, uh, camera? Or how do I, how would, how would that be worded?
I think we could just word it that say if the sewers, that if the video inspection of the existing sewer service does not prove adequate for the existing, um, condominium, then engineering reserves the right to require, um, elevations of the existing sewer service if we need a new service installed.
Okay. I hope you got all that, Sam, 'cause I'm gonna come back to you on that in just a sec, so let's, uh, let's stop sharing your screens, Sam, if we could. Um, and take a look at their report, so in the report, um, they're looking for waivers, requesting a waiver from section fifteen oh three from municipal utilities and site plan regulations to not show the rim and invert elevations of existing and proposed sanitary and stormwater. Um, so staff supports this waiver, so again, we can make a motion, or if we, if we do approve it, we'll have to change that part of it, correct, Sam?
Um, nope, that, that waiver's- that waiver's still applicable and can be granted, as is, um, I would just note, um, that as a condition of approval that they need to video the sewer.
Okay. All right, any, uh, questions or comments from the, uh, from the board regarding this application? Any member of the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns?
There are none.
There are none, okay. All right, so let's, uh, let's see if we can, uh, we can move through this, we've got, uh, uh, we've got before us to, uh, in section four point one to grant the waiver. Uh, four point two is to grant major site plan approval with precedent and subsequent conditions, I'm gonna take the waiver as an item first, um, would, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the waiver as outlined with the condition that sewer inspection via a video inspection, uh, must be done, uh, and if it does not prove adequate, uh, engineering reserves the right to, what, Sam, to?
Require elevations.
Require elevations.
If a new service has to be installed.
If a new service has to be installed.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant approval, or, uh, approval of the-
With that, uh, with that stipulation regarding the sewer inspection? Okay, so the motion's on the table, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, John Regan has seconded that, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, and then we've got, uh, four point two is to grant a major site plan approval for the proposed conversion of a two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling with related site improvements at twenty-eight South Street, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, uh, that's precedent conditions one, uh, one through three and subsequent conditions one through three. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan approval as outlined?
Recommend approval to grant the major site plan with all the precedent conditions?
And subsequent conditions.
And subsequent.
A motion's been made, though, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, John Regan seconded that, all those in favor?
Uh, I actually have a question, I'm sorry, it's sort of slipped by me, but should, should the uh, condition for the monitoring, should that be part of the site plan approval? 'Cause we made it a condition of the waiver, which-
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so, we'll back that, we'll back that train up, um, and, and, and start again on this, so, um, so, four point two-
Why don't we just clarify for the record to make the similar condition? Uh, so we don't have to, like, delete it off the previous motion, but just-
No, yeah, so-
Motion as well.
So, if we have the motion and the second, can we amend them already on the record?
Yeah.
So we'll amend them to include the same language that we included in the, uh, the waiver approval, which is, uh, the video, uh, the video inspection of the sewer to ensure that it will support a four-unit condominium, or four-unit, uh, dwelling, is that effective?
Uh, correct, you just need your first and second to, uh, verify that they-
Earl, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Yes, and, uh, John?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, uh, uh, do a roll call vote if we could, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Chairman Woodfin?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries, I'm surprised nobody was here and nobody wanted to speak to it, so, that's, uh, that's unusual. Okay, let's, uh, let's move on to item eight D if we could on our, uh, on our agenda.
Uh, Stantec, on behalf of the New Hampshire Air National Guard, requests major site plan approval for a fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot addition and associated site improvements at twenty-six Regional Drive in the I N Industrial District. Uh, we do have, I think he's a panelist, uh, Brian Ruoff, uh, representing this application. Um, and Sam can give a summary if you would like.
Yes, please, Sam.
I would love to, um, so this came before us, uh, last month as a determination of completeness. Um, so the, the Air National Guard is proposing a, uh, a fourteen thousand square foot addition, uh, to their existing building up on Regional Drive. Um, this is city-owned land, um, and while it is a state project, because the city, uh, owns the land, um, all of our regulations do apply to this project. Um, the applicant has requested, uh, I believe, five waivers. Um, uh, we, uh, do not support a, a number of them, uh, these include, um, a waiver from the requirement to show property lines, uh, setbacks, and, uh, profiles of municipal, uh, utilities. Um, but we do support, um, showing the vicinity plan at a, uh, smaller scale than is required and, um, not providing, uh, butter, uh, identification and information on the plan as that was provided in a separate document. Um, um, we have received some revisions, um, from the applicant, um, to address the majority of, of planning comments. Um, they did submit a, um, a landscape plan, uh, as that was a, uh, a requirement of our, our regulations, um, that, um, was not originally, uh, suspected they would have to comply with, um, but they, they do, um, so we do have a number of comments on there. Um, we do also have review comments, uh, from VHB as well, um, and we did just receive these, um, I believe this morning, um, and so I understand that, uh, it's likely that the board hasn't had, uh, an opportunity to review these or if they've even received them, um, but these would effectively serve as, uh, conditions of approval. Um, and, uh, the applicant did receive these, uh, this morning, so, uh, I'm, if he has any, um, need to say, uh, in respect to these, then, uh, so I'm gonna do so.
Okay, and is the applicant here, you said, Heather?
Yeah, I think he is about to share screen. Brian, I've got you, uh, there you go. Uh, I'm not sure if you're trying to speak, but you are muted, so you need to unmute yourself. You're muted and your video is off.
Whose screen is being shared?
I believe, uh, he just shared, Brian just shared his screen, but I'm not sure if he, he hasn't. Uh, Brian, I'm gonna unmute you from my end. 'Cause I'm not, there you go, so can you speak? Appears to have, be having technical difficulties.
Still one for three.
Brian, if you're having some issues, you can also shoot us an email if you, we can't hear you, I'm not sure.
Or call into the meeting.
Yeah, or call into the meeting with the call-in number that hopefully you have, do, do you know if he has the call-in number, Sam?
I did send it, I can always send it again, though.
Well, given that this is the last item on the agenda, we're gonna need to figure it out pretty quick.
Yeah. Um, I'm not able to manually, oh, yeah, let's see. He says we're on last, so we'll present the project, introduce everyone, Jeff D. Envice and FYI. Larry. I don't see a Larry, okay, I have a few attendees here. Uh, that I'm gonna allow, oops. Okay, Logan, Logan has a hand up, so let's see who this is.
Whose screen are we seeing here?
Uh, um, I believe you're seeing Brian's screen, for whatever reason, he's having trouble speaking. Um, Logan, are you, uh, with this project? Logan K. has his hand raised. And no one else, if there's anyone else in the attendees who's, uh, part of this project, please raise your hand. I've got two phone numbers, but I, I've got this person raising their hand, but they are-
Right, so while, while you guys, while you guys figure that out, so let's, let, let me just run through this a little bit quick here, Sam. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at these from a, a waiver perspective, um, we've got staff not supporting, um, two point one, uh, two point two, two point three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Richard, I think I just unmuted myself. Okay, I've got that under control, Richard, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, who is this? Hello? I can hear.
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me, Richard?
Yep.
All right, I'm using the government computer, so my apologies, it took me a while to figure out how to work. Uh, I'm Major Logan Kenny, I'm, uh, representing the National Guard. Um, I, Brian was gonna run through his presentation here, but I am available. Fortunately, uh, I'm not smart enough to answer a lot of the technical questions, but I just want to let you know that I, I, I'm available here from the Guard. I don't know if Gary Brown from Department of Public Works for the state of New Hampshire is on the line. Uh, he may be able to answer some of the contract, uh, questions while we wait for Brian to figure out what's going on.
Okay, so Sam, you had mentioned that, uh-
Are you able to hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, this is Brian Ruoff, I apologize, I, I couldn't get my audio to work.
Oh, thank God, Brian, I'm gonna hand it back over to you.
Well, well, I apologize, so I, I've got a, a, uh, like a twenty, twenty-five, um, slide presentation, so I think I've wasted everyone, enough of everyone's time so far, so I'll jump right into it if that's all right with the board?
Yes, please.
Okay, great, I appreciate the opportunity for speaking today, my name is, uh, Brian Ruoff, I'm the project manager, um, for Stantec and the, um, civil, uh, engineer of record for the civil engineering part of this project. Um, we're here today representing the Army National Guard, the Department of, New Hampshire Department of Administrative Services, a branch of the New Hampshire Department of Public Works. Um, part of the project team, just went over some of them, but Hoover Clark is the architect for the project, Yen Associates out of New Hampshire, Martin, and Martin is the structural engineer, S and H Associates who spoke earlier today were the surveyors, and Stantec was also involved on the team. Some of the key contacts that were, uh, planning on attending on the call, Gary Brown from DAS, Major Logan Kenny, who you just heard for, from, Brian Ruoff, myself, and Renee, uh, LeBranch from Stantec, not on the call, but other key personnel, uh, Chief Warrant Officer Larry Ray will be involved from this project from start to finish, and Carol Hoover Clark, the, the chief architect for the project. So some quick background on the existing facility, this is a, um, existing Army Air Force Service Building facility, uh, the property fronts on Regional Drive, the address is twenty-six Regional Drive, it's zoned industrial, the, the site in its entirety is twenty-six point seven acres, is, is a, is a partial- In its entirety is twenty-six point seven acres, is, is a, is a partial lease from the city of Concord. The actual project is closer to two acres, so a small percentage of the overall site. Again, this is a, a leased property from, by the National Guard for their purpose. Uh, there's no wetlands on the sites, not in the flood zone or the aquifer, and it's serviced by City Water and Sewer. Currently, there are fifteen, fifteen full-time staff that um operate the facility and once. Um, once a, one weekend per month, there's a hundred and thirty-five staff for training, training. So s- some of the project objectives as part of this, um. This expansion is intended to provide the New Hampshire Army National Guard with a sustainable, functional. Functional, flexible aviation readiness center that will enhance the existing. Army Air Force Service Facility for the state of New Hampshire. Um, it, the existing facility needs to be upgraded. Um, it needs to be more sustainable going forward, it provides additional facilities for the officers that work there. Uh, it relieves overcrowding of training facilities in other New Hampshire locations. It provides parking for military vehicles where currently they just park on the lawn. Um, it provides additional secured parking for the facility and flexibility for future expansion. Uh, the impro- proposed improvements Sam went over, so I'll go over them quickly, it's a. Fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot building addition that will be mostly classrooms, there's really. Uh, no change to the occupancy, it will still be the same. Uh, fifteen or so individuals a day maine- maintaining the facility and a hundred thirty-five for. Uh, training purposes one weekend up a month. Um, as I said, additional parking for mil- military vehicles, additional associated drainage. And essentially, uh, no work in the right away or near the right away. Uh, new lighting and other utilities um to coincide with the proposed uh building upgrades. So here's a uh quick overview of um where the facility is located, this is the existing building right here. This goes to uh Manchester Street, this, this way goes to um Sheep Davis, this is Regional Drive here. This is the airport area for the um Army National Guard, this is the Concord Airport here, I'm sure everyone's familiar. Uh, this is a more of a close-up of the boundary plan, this is from the previous site improvements project, the previous. Um, previous development, this is the air pad essentially, existing building. Unsecured parking area, un- not fenced in parking area, and then there's um M O V parking in this area here. Um, existing conditions, just more of a close-up, this is the, what's called the um personal parking vehicle area. It's outside of the secured fence location, the existing building here, tarmac on this side, Regional Drive here. If you drove along it, you'd see a row of arbivites that essentially buffers the, the site, existing. Conditions on the easterly side is a existing drainage system on this side, all of the existing drainage catches and catch basins. And is recharged into the system where, where um continuing that practice of recharging stormwater. Into the, into the ground. Uh, for proposed conditions, here's the existing building here. And this is the, to the, to the west is the, a proposed expansion, the proposed classrooms and. Expansion of the existing building, just a quick architectural and a, and a quick close-up of all the. Uh, proposed uses as the, as part of the proposed expansion. Um, here's an overall of the proposed site improvements, I'll just run through it very quickly, essentially, there's two sides of the site from a drainage standpoint. All of the drainage on the easterly side. Goes to the um existing infiltration system here, essentially, there's two. Uh, let me go back, sorry, there's a two infiltration systems that exist currently on the site. All the storm water from the westerly side of the site goes to this underground system, all the storm water from the easterly side of the site. Goes to this underground storm system, because we weren't able to locate the drainage. Uh, calculations from the previous design, essentially, what we're doing is designing all the proposed drainage to still go to these two. Infiltration points, but be less flows and less uh storm water than what goes to there now. Ensuring that they will continue to work, essentially, the proposed improvements of the building as discussed, because. Cause the footprint of the building impacts a lot of the existing utilities, lights and drainage. And the existing sidewalk, we're proposing new sidewalk to account for that around the existing building. And additional secured parking within the fenced in area along here. Um, to coordinate with that, we're also, as a discussed, M O V parking, which is military vehicle parking, parks in this area. Right now, it's just a grassed area and gets rut- rutted up, we're proposing a rigid asphalt pavement as part of the project with that. This is the landscaping plan as discussed, originally, we did not have internal lands. Landscaping proposed as part of the project, but we have since added it to comply with the city's regulations. This is essentially, and. Um, side views of the proposed buildings, it's hard really to gather anything from these, but. Uh, we'll show renderings that show essentially what the, what the buildings look like coming up. Again, because the footprint of the proposed building impacts the existing lights, we're proposing wall mounted white. Lights on the expanded building and additional lighting for the additional added part of parking areas. As you can see, we cover, the lighting covers these ex- uh proposed new use areas. Here's a rendering uh created by our architects, essentially, the wider roof area represents the existing buildings. And the proposed building is this green roof, the idea would be is we provide a brick facade that, that provides. Uh, a continuity between the two buildings, but still providing new materials. This is another view. Further back from the P O V parking area. And this is another view, es- essentially of the, the front entrance and how that would look. Um, as Sam indicated, we're requesting some waivers, some seem to be a non-issue based on. Review, some, some were uh not recommended by the planning board, I'd just like to go over them quickly, if allowed by the board.
Yes, please.
Okay, so essentially, because the site is only roughly seven percent of the. The proposed site plan is roughly only seven percent of the total overall site, that's essentially why we're requesting not to show a full. Uh, boundary survey and show setbacks on the plans, we provided as a supplementary plan, a plan from the previous design. That showed the full survey of the twenty-seven acre property, but because this work is being done well in proxim-. Proximation of the property lines and adjacent to the existing building, we're asking that we not be required to. Do a full boundary sh- survey and provide the setbacks on the plans. I believe the, the planning department didn't have exceptions with waiver requests three and four, so I won't necessarily speak to those. But I will speak to item five, or we requested a waiver from the requirement to provide profiles for all municipal utilities. As I indicated previously, the two um utilities for the project are water and sewer, we are in agreement with providing a sewer. Uh, profile, which is the requirement of D E S, cause we'll have to do that for them anyway, but, but to provide a profile for the. Small section of water main that is being relocated, it, it would really serve no purpose and it, you wouldn't really be able to see anything, so. From a practicality standpoint, we're still asking for a waiver from the water service profile utility. Um, we did receive the engineering review comments, we went through them in detail this morning, most of them we can re- resolve with a clarification. Or a response, some um can be res- resolved with minor revisions to the plans or drainage report. Um. There's some city standard requirements that may not be um appropriate for this type of project and how it's administered and. Um, if, if the board is willing to permit me to speak to that, I, I would be happy to.
Yeah, please.
Okay, uh, the only other issue that came up in the engineering review is A O T permitting, this project is specifically. Phased to be under the permitting threshold, we are, we are expecting future improvements to be included. And are coordinating these efforts with A O T and they are aware, so currently, A O T permitting is not required, although it. In- indicated that it's close to the requirement in V H B's review letter. Specific to the standard city project requirements for surety, for site stabilization, work in the roadway. Um, for site stabilization, there's a bond will be issued or posted by the. Um, contractor doing this work, and all this pro- this entire project is federally funded. So in this instance, we feel like we're, we have that uh essentially covered, so it would be a redundant um covering in, in essence. Um, for the surety of the work in the road right away, there is no work being performed in the ri- ri- road right away, so I don't. We don't see that as a necessary requirement, for spite- site inspection, this, this project is being. Administered by New Hampshire D P W and inspected by the Army National Guard's um Construction Branch. Department of Administrative Services and Cooper Clark Stantec as part of the project, so there's actually three level, levels of inspection already. Involved in this project, so I know that, that it would be a standard requirement for the city. To involve their engineer to inspect the project as well, but in this instance, we have three levels of inspection for this project. And we're requesting that not be required for the project. Sewer and water impacts fees that was mentioned in the engineering le- letter, essentially, the occupancy for this building doesn't change, so I'm not, I wasn't sure if that would. Uh, facilitate uh not, that not being required. Um, so that's essentially the, the, our presentation, and I'm happy to open it up to any questions or, or address any concerns anyone might, may have.
Take a deep breath, went through that pretty quick, so. Uh, any questions from the board? Must be a question out there somewhere, so, um.
We have Martha Drucker's asking to speak.
Yeah, okay, Martha, go ahead. Go ahead, Martha.
You're muted if you're trying to speak, Martha. There she goes.
There we go, so I just have a few questions, actually, it's just a reminder, so I oversee a lot of the construction at the airport. And since this property is owned by the city of Concord, I need to make sure that. Um, you have applied for your O E triple A permit, which is a forty-five day review period. And nothing can start until we received um confirmation from F A A that that's been approved. I also, um, I'm under the understanding that you're putting on some solar panels, which is, and we support that. A hundred percent, however, you also have to s- apply for the F A A Glint and Glare Study. That has to be submitted to F A A, and we need those um recommendations or approvals from F A A. Before you can move forward, um, again, this is city owned property. So we need to make sure that we're in compliance with, with all our F A A assurances for anything we do at the airport. Um, the other questions I had was, um, any. I, I know I work pretty, pretty um closely with Zach with your facility. And any kind of storm water or infiltration or um. Soil brought onto the site has to comply or be, at least be in accordance with our conservation agreement. With um F A A, D O T, Fish Wildlife and U S um fishing game. So I just need to make sure those, those assurances are complied with um before we move forward with the project. Um, also, we're required through the, um, since you are doing expansion on city property. We have to comply with our requirements for an exhibit A plan, which is required by F A A, which means I will need surveyed as built. Uh, by a licensed surveyor in New Hampshire of all the improvements, including utilities. Um, you know, a full survey list of what's required for our as builds, so we can update our exhibit A plan with F A A. And I can provide you with a list of what's required for that. So, for the most part, I just wanna make sure that you're looking into all the F A A requirements to move forward with this project. Um, these are just three or four things that I need to make sure you're in compliance with, you can't bring any materials, any soils off-site. You have to, any soils brought in have to be in compliance with Fish and Wildlife Services. Um, so, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to talk to you. You know, at any point to give you kind of some guidelines on this, but I'm assuming Zach is very familiar with all these requirements. And that you adhere to all these, but we will, we, we will require all this, all this information. Um, prior to the start of construction. Um, we also will probably require um ties and as built for all the utilities, water and sewer. Any kind of water connections, changes, um, rerouting of any water or sewer. We need surveyed as builds for that to include all the detail that's required for our um record keeping for G I S.
So, hey Martha, where, you, you're mentioning all, I mean, I, you know, there's probably fifteen things you've just mentioned. Where are those all on, I mean, are those part of what we're talking about tonight, are they part of conditions of approval for, for the plan that's before us? Or is this something that has to happen secondarily after the fact?
Well, I think we just need a condition of approval that, um, the approval is gonna be in accordance. With all requirements of F A A regulations, not only related to air, air traffic control and operations. But also our conservation management agreement.
Well, what, why, is that not on this report, then?
Um, unfortunately, I'm not sure, cause I just got back from vacation today, so I've been gone for the past two weeks, but I have mentioned it. Um, in the past to both engineering and planning, so.
I mean, I, I hate to, I hate to put a, you know, and, and approve, an approval and with all engineering, you know, unless I've got it. I want it, I want it spelled out, I wanna see, you know, this is what you've got to approve as opposed to. Uh, if we did approve this plan saying, and you've got to approve all of, you know, engineering comments, cause. It's an ever-ending, you know, it could be, it could be this, it could be that, you could have forgotten something, so. I, I mean, I, I'm a little, I'm a little uh unclear as to exactly what, I mean, this, this is. Seems like it's a pretty big project, why we're not, why we're not seeing this already on here?
Yeah, I think if we condition the approval that the applicant has to comply with all F A A regulations. And. City regulations related to development of this parcel, I think that would cover it. Because the National Guard's well aware of all these conditions.
Okay. All right, um, any comments, Brian, regarding that?
Yes, we're, we're aware of these conditions and, and um, we're, we're in agreement with complying um with all of them.
Okay.
In the, in, in, in the spirit of moving forward, yep.
Okay, um, so, I think, uh, I think that was the hand up, right, Heather, is that the only person that had a hand up? I see the hand, but I think it might have been, uh.
Yeah, that was Martha, but I'm hoping that someone from engineering will address. This request to remove all these standard conditions that we normally have in these projects, I, I don't know of any situation where we have. Not required site stabilization or inspection fees or, or really any of that stuff that he had up there. So, I mean. Martha or Todd, can you please, um, sort of respond to that, I don't think we support that in planning, but.
So, this is Martha, so again, I would not, um. I, I probably would not be in support of that, because this is city owned land, we are gonna require inspection fees. For the wa- for the, the, the water and sewer, these are municipal services. Um. And our se- site stabilization. All our regular requirements will adhere to this project, this is, this isn't a, a National Guard project, this is. A project being built on city property that's owned by the city. And we're required by F A A as the sponsor uh for the airport to make sure all our regulations are adhered to. So I would say the applicant would be required to comply with all our standard requirements for inspection fees. For permits um. And anything else that's required.
Okay, so that's um, again, so we're looking at it here. It's waivers two-one, two-two, two-three. Staff does not support and engineering does not support, is that correct? That's municipal utilities, the setbacks and buffers and uh property lines on the plans. I get, I don't know what that is. Section twelve point oh eight B and section fifteen oh three one requiring property lines to be shown on the plans. With bearings and dimensions like. Is that right? So engineering doesn't support those either?
We do not.
Okay. All right, uh, let's uh see if we can move on here. So uh, uh, we've got any questions or comments from the board regarding this? So again, let's look at this. This is a long litany of things that are in here. So we've got uh under two, we've got waiver requests. Under three, we've got technical review comments, which we need to add. Some technical review comments regarding FAA regulations and city regulations. We've got four, which is a landscape plan comment. We've got uh then to grant ADR approval and to grant uh waivers. Or deny the waivers appropriately under five. So let's move right to five here. Is that appropriate, Sam? I think that the landscape plan comments, do we have any landscape plan comments that need to be addressed in the in the motions or in the approval process?
No, these would just be conditions of approval.
Okay, so conditions of approval really don't affect the landscape piece, do they?
Yep, this is uh one of our typical conditions of approval is um address all review comments satisfied to the plan. So it's wrapped up in that.
Okay, do you uh, do you have any recommendation as far as where the FAA requirements or the regulations and the city engineering comments? Is there already a city engine, the standard city engineering one that's in the precedent or subsequent conditions?
Yeah, um, all review comments satisfied to planning and engineering staff. Um, you may just wanna say inclusive of all FAA requirements in cities.
Okay, so uh, just to be clear, we don't have any other comments or questions from the board or any member of the audience, right? So we close a public hearing. So we're gonna go ahead and close a public hearing and we're gonna look right at um uh section five on your report here. Which is the recommendations, five point one to grant ADR approval for the fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot building. Uh, additional with associated site improvements at twenty-six Regional Drive. I think uh, it's a beautiful looking building. And uh, I'd certainly vote for approving the ADR approval if someone would like to make a motion to grant that ADR approval. As outlined and as we saw with the plan set, we'll take that motion.
So moved.
The motion was made by David Fox and seconded by John Regan. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
So that uh motion carries uh five point one to grant the ADR approval. Let's look at five-two to uh, to uh, to grant or deny the waivers. So again, as we've heard um comments and from the applicant, we've heard comments from engineering and from staff. We have any uh, anybody in the uh, any member of the uh, the board wish to uh, to um move out of the denial piece? For the waiver. So what I'm gonna do is five point two says to grant the following waivers, which is A and B. And deny uh, under five point three, deny the waivers for A, B, and C, which is the outlined in your, in your report there. Would anybody like to make them, to move any of those denials into the approval process? Or uh, vice versa, move any of those approvals to the denials? Or can we look at that and take a motion to uh, to grant those waivers and deny those waivers as outlined in your report? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant uh, grant uh, the following waivers? Uh, A twelve oh five and B twelve oh four three and twelve oh four eight. And deny uh waivers A twelve oh eight B and fifteen oh three one, as well as five oh three nineteen. And sixteen oh two fourteen B, my goodness. So uh, would someone like to make a motion to uh, to grant and deny those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Motion was made by David. Uh, we have a second?
I will second that.
Uh, seconded by John Regan. All those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
No.
Counselor Pierce?
No.
So you have two nays and three or four ayes.
Okay, so that motion carries. Uh, so five point four, which is to grant major site plan approval for the proposed fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot addition. With associated site improvements at twenty-six Regional Drive, subject to the following precedent subsequent conditions outlined in precedent conditions. One through five and subsequent conditions one through three. With notice that uh, all FAA regulations and city comments regarding engineering uh be addressed. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that the major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Most uh, motion was made by John Regan and seconded by Matt Hicks. Uh, all those in favor by roll call?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Member Hicks?
Aye.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Okay, so that uh, that motion carries. So uh, you guys uh, didn't get everything you looked for. But uh, we thank you for getting through the technical difficulties and good luck with the project.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, is there anything else which comes before us legally as a board?
No, you are, you've covered it all.
We are free and clear to go at uh nine fifteen. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Look at that, everybody, now everybody's making motions. So we got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Chairman Woodfinn?
Aye.
Member Rosenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Pierce?
Aye.
Member Hicks? Member Hicks is on mute. He's saying yay.
Yay.
Member Fox?
All right, I I guess I'll say yay.
Member Fox?
Aye.
Member Regan?
Aye.
All right, with no approvals, that motion carries. So we are adjourned. We will see you all next month for the Wednesday, October twenty-first meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Be safe.
Be safe.
Thanks, Rich.
Night.